I want to please stand and must say a pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with the stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now you please pray with me just a moment. Lord, thank you for today and the opportunity to serve the citizens of Walton County, assist us in making the best decisions for all involved. Amen.
Mr. Chairman, I think the first item on our agenda is the minutes. I believe you still have a copy of the minutes in front of your desk.
Okay. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
You have a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, we do have one announcement. It is a request to continue for Chiringo, which is number three on our agenda. They are requesting to continue till the November 10th, 2016, Planning Commission meeting at five o'clock at this location.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes.
Mr. Chairman, the next items are all causative judicial, need be sworn in.
Anyone that's... Anyone that anticipates testifying on any matter before the board tonight will please stand and raise your right hand. Do each of you solemnly swear or firm the testimony you're about to give before this board will be the truth.
I do.
Thank you. And when you come to the podium, if you would, state your name and that you have been sworn. And if you would, if you have an unusual last name, spell your last name for the... My lady taking the minutes. If any commissioner had any ex parte contacts that you need to disclose or hand over, I thank you. Mr. Davis.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Davis. Mr. Chairman, the first item on our agenda is Costa Blanca. This is a project for a 14-unit condo in three lots on 1.6 acres. The future land use is infill, which makes it a major... Infill and mixed use, it's a major development order application. I'll ask Rita Banugnadi from our staff to come and brief the planning commission on this application.
Rita Banugnadi with the planning department. This is a major development order application submitted by Emerald Coast Associates requesting a removal of three existing homes and build a 14-unit condo on a 1.6-acre lot with the future land use of infill and partially with village mixed use. This project is going on the end of 393 at the 30A. We have one public comment that we received, which is attached. We have very minor comments from planning department. We just received comments from environmental department, very, very minor, and the fire department cleared their comments. With the revisions that they need to be making, we don't have any objection with the property from the project.
Okay. And who do you... Who do we have to speak on the project?
Agent.
I don't have the names of any of the people that are going to be speaking.
Dean Burgess from Emerald Coast Associates.
Thank you, Rita. Good evening, members of the board. My name's Dean Burgess, spelled B-U-R-G-I-S. I have been sworn. I'm the engineer of record and developer's agent on the Costa Blanca request for development order. As Rita explained, it is a 14-unit condominium request near the intersection of 393 and 30A, just to the west of that intersection, basically across the street from Gulf Place. It's on 1.5 acres, 1.16 of which is VMU Village Mixed Use, and 0.69 acres is infill. There's a total allowable density of up to 19 units. We're proposing 14. Impervious surface ratio is well below what is allowed. We're at 30.3 percent impervious surface ratio. And I'm here to answer any questions that the board may have.
I have a question. Yes, I do. I know that the coastal protection zone requires so many feet from the line, the coastal line. How many feet fall landward is this going to be built?
From the shoreline? It's a...
Right, from the coastal control line is what I meant.
Okay. From the CPZ, there's a 25-foot CPZ line that's established from the top of the bluff, and the building is oriented outside of the CPZ because that's a requirement. A portion of the building is landward of the CCCL. The three homes that are constructed on the three lots are landward... I'm sorry, seaward as well of the CCCL. We're basically placing our building and parking where the existing buildings are.
What's the elevation?
The elevation is roughly 24 on the dune. I think the houses, the finished floor elevation is 24 and a half of those homes on average.
Anyone else have questions?
Yes, sir.
Could you excuse the asphalt parking for your... It's not purvious, okay?
No, it's proposed as asphalt. We have been having conversations with the owner. More than likely, we're going to go to pavers just for the aesthetic, and asphalt is hot on your feet at the beach. So our most recent conversations are going to a light paver. They will not be pervious. We've got drain inlets and a traditional exfiltration system for drainage.
I was just going to ask, do you have any elevation photos that we can see or drawings?
Sure.
Thank you.
Architectural?
I didn't see any.
They should be in your packet, but I brought them.
I didn't see them.
They weren't good, but we have.
You do have colored?
Well, all this...
No, they're not colored. They're...
In this little computer, I couldn't tell what it was.
I thought I would bring these because those PDF files are a little bit grainy and not very attractive. So this is a rendering of the, as you're looking from 30A, the view of building and the eastern elevation.
Is it gated?
It... The parking garage on the building will be gated, but the actual driveway into the overflow parking will not be gated. So access to the building and underneath will be gated.
How tall is the building?
It is 50 feet.
Exactly, 50 feet.
It's right at 50-foot mark.
The neighbors across the 30A corridor, will they have a view?
Well, one of the things that was required is because they're a single-family home to the west of us, we've got a 40-foot setback distance that were in excess of 40 feet, including our landscape off our parking lot, about 50, 55 feet. So there will be an opening in that area.
To the west. And to the east, you already have condominiums.
Yes, to the east, there are whole-story condominiums to the east.
Well, it's very pretty.
Excuse me?
It's very pretty.
Thank you.
That's all we have for him.
Thank you.
Mr. Bob Chubb. Do you think that's how it is, or is that Clark?
Yes.
Would you like to speak?
Bob Clark, CLAOK. The only question I had, and maybe this is for you, is I know you're setback from the coastal construction by 25 feet. The question would be, does it touch any of the armoring? I assume there's a sea wall there. I just want to see if anything that is part of the construction affects that and neighbors to one side or the other, of which I'm one not too far down the road, so.
Sure, I'd be happy to answer that. It would not affect any of the armoring walls associated with this property or adjacent properties. The existing homes are currently built exactly in the same location where the building will be setting. So we're right in the same... We're going to maintain the same line of construction that's there today.
This Charles Cassidy?
Yes. I'm Charles M. Mike Cassidy. And I have been sworn. And as Mr. Burgess indicated, I am the single-family residence immediately to the west of this development. My biggest concern, of course, is just as Mr. Clark raised the question about the armor, armory and the effect on the armory. I had hoped, and I would hope that the approval of this request would be contingent upon some effective coordination because the integrity of that armory is critical to the coastal dune as well as the beach itself. I had been led to believe that there may have been, or should have been, maybe some coordination, but I've heard nothing from Mr. Burgess. I also raised the issue at the April public hearing, the very first public hearing on this matter, about the... What provisions would have been made for safety? Again, because of my situation, I am the last, will be, the very last single-family residence left, the last of the Mohicans, as you might say. But, you know, with eight children and 24 grandchildren, I raised the question of, you know, just what provisions, what best management practices within the industry might be provided, and with the general public in mind as well. Mr. Burgess' response was diligent parenting should be sufficient. I suggest that that is hardly sufficient with tort liability and not just these days, but in any year. But I guess that's my purpose and my reason for being here, too. I suggest that the oversight of the county, which I have full confidence in, you know, be provided as well.
Excuse me, I have a question. Do you have armoring on your...
Yes, I do. These were installed... Mine was installed after Hurricane Dennis, just as it was in front of the development property. Yes. And that's my... One of my major concerns is the... They're not necessarily tied together. My understanding was theirs was put in first, and mine was put in subsequent to that. And it's sort of a, for lack of a better term, a wraparound effect, whereas I think theirs may be straight. And I'm not sure... I just think some coordination might be best.
So you do have a wing that comes back in on yours?
Yes, yes.
I know what you're saying. When it comes around, if they don't, it creates a scouring effect.
It could very well. It could very well, yes.
But if you've got those wings, it should help.
Yes. But again, we're dealing not with, you know, great distances. We're dealing with almost inches rather than just feet because, as he pointed out, the proximity of the properties... And again, I know you're all familiar with it. It's just rooftop to rooftop almost. And that's my concern.
Mr. Burgess, would you like to address that?
I guess it ties in with the previous comment regarding the coastal armory. We will not be impacting or affecting or altering the coastal armory if there is an opportunity during construction to secure the walls together. Obviously, they're covered up now by sand. We don't have a way of identifying the condition of the walls, or if they are, are not tied together. During the course of construction, if we have an opportunity to do that, I think it's obviously in everybody's best interest, you know, to do that. So we would certainly look to work toward doing that with you. And during construction, there were some safety issues raised. We will have, you know, construction fence and make obviously every effort we can to keep people from coming onto the site during construction activities.
Good communication can prevent an awful lot of contamination from folks.
Excellent. Does anyone else have a wish to speak on this issue? Any of the commissioners have anything else?
I think if we do make a motion to accept this, we need to make a note to ask our commissioners to please consider the concern of building a... Some type of a protection, geotubing on the whole exterior to tie in to the neighbors so that... I know the condos that are immediately to the east of this do have... I think it's geotubing behind that building. So maybe there's something that they could do to preserve that dune and keep it from doing exactly like this gentleman just said. Just make the suggestion.
He doesn't like geotubes.
Well, just make the suggestion to the commissioners to consider that.
I think it'd be part of the... Does anybody want to...
I'll make that motion.
Make that motion?
Motion to approve with consideration.
Right.
I want to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Measure passes.
Mr. Chairman, number two on our agenda is the Pando small-scale amendment. This is a future land amendment from conservation residential to low-density residential on 2.5 acres, and I'll ask Ms. Christine Samman from our staff to come up and brief the board on this application.
Good evening, commissioners. Mr. Chair, Christine Samman with Planning and Development Services. Last name is S-A-M-M-E-L-M-A-N-N. This request is from Susan Pando via McNeil Carroll Engineering for a small-scale future land use map amendment to change the land use designation from conservation residential two to one on approximately 2.5 acres from... To low-density residential. The proposed amendment is requested to support a proposed 10-lot, single-family residential subdivision for which the conservation residential two to one cannot support. Therefore, they're asking for low-density residential. And I believe someone from Carroll is here to answer any of your questions, or if I can answer any questions, I'd be glad to.
Thank you. Hey, I'm Sean McNeil with McNeil Carroll Engineering, MCNEIL. This is Susan Pando, who is the property owner from Atlanta. We've both been sworn, and thank you for that. Essentially, you have it in front of you where we thought about infill to go even double the density. We're requesting, however, this is a required amount that Ms. Pando would like to have. I believe it's compatible. We've given you a compatibility analysis. I think it needs the requirements they have of the 10 properties within the circumference that were compared of those, the... There were only two that have less density than what we're requesting. I'd be happy to entertain any questions, but Ms. Pando would like to say something first. Thank you.
Hey, I'm Susan Pando, and I actually grew up in Bluntstown, and my family and I have owned this property for at least 38 years, and we plan to build before now, but... So I hope to, in the next couple of years, build and actually on this property and would like to have the opportunity to make more lots. So we actually have friends that want to build next to us, so that's my reasoning. And I came down today just to say that.
Do you have any questions, others?
How many lots are you planning to develop?
Well, we're asking for 10.
Up to 10.
Up to 10. I would like to keep a half an acre for myself, and so it would be eight more, so nine.
What size lots would that be?
I think they're maybe a quarter acre each.
It'd be roughly a quarter acre, yes.
50 by 150?
Off the top of my head, quarter acre of about 8, 9,000 square feet.
And that land is pretty level, or does it have a fall to it?
It's pretty... It's pretty level. The elevation is 37, and it kind of falls off a little bit, but I think that it's pretty nominally 37, and a little bit falls down about 36, so it's pretty level.
Yeah, we just passed that one behind the classic court.
There's an adjacent property that just had this... There's an adjacent property that just had this same land use change done, so.
Okay.
Okay. Any commissioner have anything else?
Thank you.
Paul... Is that Kauf? Kauf?
I stood up and was sworn to that. Can I hand these to you?
We live at... If he has any objections, he's coming into the... Malcolm Look's rule.
Are you asking me?
Yes.
No objection.
Mr. Chair, I would mark this as objectives, exhibit one, you have to accept the amendment.
And it's just for reference. It's not... I mean, it's not a big discussion. We live at 32 North Dino Drive. We are butted up right against that. That's be... Through our backyard, we have a really long lot. It's a 300-foot lot. The developer who came in was looking to build homes that people want to live in, not just come down and rent and everything like that. We love our lot. We have some conservation in the back. In fact, we're not allowed to build anything in the last 100 feet. That was part of the development order that went in for our homes. What's behind there right now is supposed to be conservation residential. That's what we thought, you know. I guess I'm always under the opinion that all these master plans are set up because we're trying to get to a density and get to a thing that everybody here who lives wants to have. And we've... Since we've been here, the one of the lots on Luvva Lane, as you come in, that was all used to be conservation residential two-one, the one where it says was CR 2-1, that was approved. They tried to get 20 houses in that. They... I think you all approved it. It went to the commissioners. They denied it. It went back, and then they dropped it down to 10, and you guys approved it, and it went through. We complained the whole time. We disagreed with that because, once again, the people who lived next to them, the McCluskeys, bought their house thinking that was going to be what was next to them. Same thing with us. You know, we saw all the stuff around us. We knew what it was, but behind us, we knew that that was the same setup as ours. Also, if you look on the Michaela Lane, I don't know what happened there. We've heard varying stories about that, but that's still conservation residential, and there's 30 lots there that, if you look back there, they're tiny little lots that, the way they're set up, they're hard to build on, take a lot of work, and all that kind of stuff. Now you're going to put a road back there to have people to get back to that other one with, instead of five homes, you're going to have 10 homes. I would prefer this gets denied. I would like it to be left the way it is. I think we're constantly adding more and more and changing the things down here. Same reason why there's a better South Walton and all those kind of moves right now is people who live down here came down here for the quaintness and the niceness of this area, and I don't want it to turn into destin. So, I mean, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them, but it's just, I don't... If it were there and it was set up that way, I would have known that when I moved in, and I have no problem with it, but we... It just seems like we continue adding more density, adding more density as we move forward. Thanks.
Denise?
Do you mind if I present two pages each? My name is Denise Kauf. I live at 32 North Dino Drive, and I took the compared parcels that were part of the attachments to today's meeting, and I've listed the first four parcels that make up my neighborhood and added the Pando project. I'm at Spyglass Hill on Dino Drive. Across the street from me is Emma Huggins. We have Michaela Lane. That's Michaela's, as you can tell. We just talked about that is... Was zoned for 10 lots. We now have 30 there, so we're 20 homes over the original density of our comprehensive plan. Luvva Lane was just under construction. Some homes are now lived in. Again, you agreed to increase that by five homes. The builder was trying to increase that by more than, I think by 15. The Pando project now sits in front of you. They want to increase it, same as Gulf Place Retreat on Luvva Lane, by five homes. It's zoned for five. They want to put in 10 homes. So if you look at what was originally planned for our 15 acres, it's for 41 homes. We're now looking at 71 homes. The density has gone up by 30 homes. If you approve the Pando project, which I hope you wouldn't approve, that's 73 percent density increase. And to dumb it down, you can look at the next page to get a picture of what the density looks like in my neighborhood and what it should have been. And I'm not the only resident in the county. It'd be nice if somebody could make some eye contact also with me. And I'm not the only resident that's tired of the density changes. You know, I don't know what it takes to come in here and talk to somebody and actually not have a developer get their way, or the great compromise doesn't work for the residents here. What works is what was originally zoned. Five homes is what should be built behind my property. Do you have any questions?
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Where did you say you live?
32 North Dino Drive.
And this is directly behind you?
Correct. We have six lots on our parcel that backs up to the Pando parcel, and we'd like the homes to be the same as our homes, which are zoned. Zoned for five. We have six. You know, the builders, the developers, if Pando, Ms. Pando, wants to talk to Scott Wood or other developers, you can make good money on five homes. You know, it's not always about the money, but you can make a good amount of money on five homes versus 10. There may not be that much of a difference for her. But I think density, from everything I've heard, is our main concern in our county right now. And if you look at the diagram, our 15 acres that surround me have already suffered increases in density of a pretty high number. And I did read some of the paperwork for tonight that tried to appear that 10 homes is normal in our area, but homes are being built to my north and Caddy Corner on the north side. Each plot is about two acres, and both of those plots, each are... Each of those are putting in five homes. So next to me, to my north, because this property is to my east, the property to my north is putting in five homes. The property across the street from that is putting in five homes in the same size parcel. So it would be appropriate to keep, I believe, the five homes, six homes per parcel continuing behind us.
Does Seacraft drive the access to get down there to this property that we're talking about?
No, it is... You have to go through the 30 lots on Emma Huggin... Um, no, on Michaela. So Seacraft is empty.
Right.
Where you see a lot of... There was an old home there, so a lot of trees are gone. I think there was a farm home. Where you see that blue line, you'd have to come to the south to get into the property. So you could... You would take 393 to Luvva Lane, to Dino Drive, to Michaela, to whatever drive they would call their new street.
Is there a traffic study?
Yeah, the traffic write-up said that it would not work, I believe, and it... That's what we read, is that the traffic studies is a negative.
Yeah, let me look. I've got it. Well, thank you for bringing all this to our attention.
Sure. Any other questions? Any other questions? So the traffic analysis was submitted. There just, there does not appear to be available capacity on the impacted segments. So that's an, I believe, you know, it's a lot of jargon I'm not used to, but that doesn't sound very positive.
Traffic concurrency analysis prepared. Here it is right here. On the transportation infrastructure. This is just telling you how to finish up with the compatibility.
Anybody got any more questions?
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
You got anybody else that's going to speak?
Yeah, one more. Nope, that's it. That's the last of the speakers. Anyone else want to speak on this project? Please come forward, state your name.
I'm Anne McCloskey. I've not been sworn. I do. It's M-C-C-L-O-S-K-E-Y and I'm the Anne McCloskey next to the development of the ten houses. And I just, I just want to say that my husband and I spent a lot of time and effort fighting against the developer from the twenty houses and we got ten. And so I just want to support my neighbors and their effort to do the same here tonight. So I thank you very much.
Would you like to address any of the questions?
Yes, sir.
Got a written? Yes, please.
Susan Ponday. So I'd like to say in reply to the people that are in opposition to this, that my family and I bought this property thirty-eight years ago. So I would venture to say that was thirty-eight years was a lot longer than potentially these people even knew about Santa Rosa. I grew up in this area and we specifically picked this beach because of the way it is, because it's small and it's unique and I want to preserve that. I want to live here. But I also want the option to be the same if I decide to have more lots, have up to ten, which I think is compatible with everybody else around. And I'm certainly not trying to ruin anything and I'm not trying to be a developer. I just would like the same opportunity as my neighbors and I plan to live in this area myself. So I don't plan to ruin anything.
As far as compatibility, we're looking about the same as all the surrounding properties?
Not really.
Some of them.
It's, it's a mix. Some are more, some less.
We approved a larger lot subdivision right behind Classic Court. You know, that was in our meeting two months ago. But it was larger lots. It wasn't this small. You know, the only concern I have, and this is as a concerned citizen, is we're not really prepared for the watershed and there is a body of water to the immediate east. And when you put in a subdivision like this with these many homes, you know, there's going to have to be something paid to the county for that. Is that correct?
At the time of development, if they're going to do a subdivision, it would have to meet all the county's stormwater requirements. It gets reviewed by our engineers and it is evaluated based on stormwater and that will be reviewed if and when it does come forward as a subdivision for.
So is each time they build a property, it's going to come forward?
That's, yes, sir, that's correct. Yes, sir. I mean, you would not be able to go out and just throw, build a subdivision without getting, being reviewed by the county and also requiring a plat and so forth. So it, it would, it would be reviewed for stormwater at that time.
And so the developer will have to pay that impact fee for tying into a water?
The impact, no ma'am, the, the stormwater would have to be constructed. The stormwater facilities would have to be constructed.
On the property?
Mm-hmm, yes, ma'am.
Huge expense.
The, the impact fee for transportation concurrency is different. There is a fee that is required and it's paid into an account for that road segment and the county at some point in time would use those funds to, to mitigate that, the traffic that's created by the, by the developments. That's pretty common throughout, throughout Walton County.
Wayne, is there a possibility that property to the west, those long lots, could they come in and split those lots?
With the current land use?
It's neighborhood infill, so.
Neighborhood infill allows up to?
Up to eight, based on compatibility.
Yeah, right. The neighborhood infill, any project in the neighborhood infill has to be a major development order and there's also a compatibility requirement for neighborhood infill. And as Matt mentioned, they can get up to eight, depending on the compatibility. If the, if the, if the board sees fit that eight inches is compatible, that could be achieved.
So they could split those lots?
Potentially, they could. Again, has, that, that is, that it would have to be approved by the board.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I would also point out that, I would also like to point out too, that if you see in the southwest corner, it's VMU Village Mixed Use District, going back historically, the, the county, the original trust plan, if you, you guys may be familiar with that, for the county identified these village centers all throughout thirty-eight coastal village mixed centers and also some north of ninety-eight. Those village mixed use centers were meant to be sort of a, a, an activity center with surrounding neighborhoods serving that with a variety of densities and so forth. So just keep that in mind. The closer you get to those village centers, the, the density would, you would see a progressively increasing density towards the centers.
I believe we're, we're done with our rebuttal. I hope that you give us a positive recommendation. We appreciate your consideration of our request. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members.
Any comments?
Comment?
Commissioners?
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
I want to make a motion that we take, we, you know, ask our commissioners to take in their consideration, but also at the same time recommend back to them not over eight lots.
Okay, we can put that in as a recommendation, but it's up to the commissioners to accept that.
Okay.
Okay.
So the request is for?
Ten.
Ten on two-and-a-half acres. So you could either grant a small-scale amendment or recommend a small-scale amendment or not recommend.
Okay.
Yeah, the actual language is, is they're, they're wanting to go from conservation residential two-to-one to low-density residential.
Okay.
But currently they can have two, two-and-a-half acreage times, five lots.
Five lots.
They're asking to convert it over to?
Twice that much.
Bring it up to ten.
So your choices are to recommend granting the small-scale amendment or not granting the small-scale.
Okay.
I'll recommend not to accept.
Okay. Do I have a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Oppose. Okay, but it will go forward.
Mr. Chairman, number four on our agenda is the Southland Utility Services. This is also another small-scale amendment application submitted by Southland Utility Services. They're requesting to change the future land use from urban residential to industrial on eight-point-two-five acres. Again, I'll ask Ms. Christine Samuelman to come up and brief the board on this application.
Thank you, Wayne.
Good evening again. Christine Samuelman with Planning and Development, and I have been sworn in. This is an application from Southland Utility Services, Inc. for a small-scale amendment change on approximately eight-point-four-oh acres from urban residential to industrial. The proposed amendment request is to initiate further development of Southland Services headquarters in that area. The area is largely vacant on the west and north, as it shows in your packet. Also, just, we recently received today a number of comments. You have those comments before you, and they just came in, so I wanted to make sure that you got them. And those were from landowners. Some could be here and I don't know if there are any here.
I have two comments.
And there is a representative for Southland here as well.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Jeff McKinnis and I represent Southland Utility Services. We have a request here before you this afternoon to change the future land use of this property. My client is piecing together eight lots to make a parcel so that they can, in the future, apply to build a new corporate headquarters, an office building for their operations and a operations center area behind there where, of course, they will park their trucks and equipment. The property across Oakwood Lakes Boulevard, which is adjacent to one boundary of this, four of those lots there have already, by the county, had the future land use changed to industrial. And then the Chelco Operations Center site, which is a twenty-acre parcel, is contiguous to those lots and it's in the city of Dufeniac and it is also industrial. This property would front on North Highway three-thirty-one and have a side boundary down Oakwood Lakes Boulevard. The, a couple of the objections that I have, have seen this afternoon are concerned about noise or dust.
That's the biggest complaint.
I wanted to make it clear that the plan, the conceptual plan now, that we would bring forward at a later date, is for an office building and a, a parking, a storage area behind that where we'd be parking daily equipment and trucks. This is not any type of a industrial operation. It's not a factory. It's not a plant. There's no smoke.
Like a lay-down yard?
Sir?
Like a lay-down yard?
Yes, sir. So there, there would not be work going on, on this site in the outdoor area that would be creating noise or dust or smoke or anything like that. This is also a company that operates, except in an emergency situation, Monday through Friday, they don't, they don't operate at nighttime or on the weekends unless, of course, they do have to come in to handle an emergency or a storm or something like that. So from that standpoint, it, it may be a little misnomer when we use industrial, but to get the lay-down yard and put the equipment there, that's, that's the kind of a future land use category it took.
Pretty much static.
Yes, sir, and that's exactly what happens on the Chelco operations site adjacent to this property. I wanted to also raise one other thing for you, just as a way of history on this property. There were a set of covenants and restrictions recorded by the original developer out there of this Oakwood Lakes subdivision and those covenants have now expired, but in the covenants it provided that the uses in Block V, along with a couple of other blocks, those lots could be used for commercial or industrial use. So when the original development was put in, in the original scheme of that development was put in, these lots, we're asking you to consider changing, were part of one of the blocks that that developer said could be used for commercial or industrial.
And those that are to the west and they're already zoned industrial?
The lots across Oakwood Lakes Boulevard, those are all owned by Chelco. There are seven lots that actually front Oakwood Lakes over there. Four of those, the county changed the future land use already to industrial. There are three in the center that have been acquired and that, that process of change will be coming forward probably into the city. But then the entire Chelco twenty-acre parcel is industrial in the city.
Okay. Commissioners, have any questions? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I have an Irene and Timothy Newhouse.
Hi, I'm Irene. It's Timothy. We're property owners. That is within three-hundred feet of the proposed construction of a corporate office building operations center. We, as husband and wife, have major concerns and issues with this proposal. Sorry.
Reason why she's upset, we, we've been together twenty-odd years, married, and we built our dream home. Out of our own pocket for this land. We lived in a camper while we built it, six years ago. And from, since then, my daughter came down with cancer. She went and, we lost her for twenty minutes. Now she's a vegetative state. If you tap on the wall, she jumps. So that's, that's what we are basically concerned about.
The noise, the noise?
I mean, we, we owe a little bit on the land, but everything on the property, we paid for. And I understand, we love Dufeniac. Understand we'll go and grow. That's normal. But our intentions were in a nice, quiet subdivision home. Now, yes, they got, they got commercial lands behind us, but they're planning far enough away from us, it wouldn't disturb us. But now they want to come in beside of us, was residential, where it'll be, where they're at, they would be one lot over from us. And which, I don't know if she's got it marked or not, but, I mean, I know we're not going to stop. One little homeowner, my neighbor, he's complaining too. We're not going to stop. So, like I said, all of our funds is wrapped up in this place, so I would be willing to sell my property and just go, go buy something else. Because we're not going to stop Chelco. Just like I tell them, they can't turn my power off. They're going to say, heck with you, I'm going to cut it off. So we're not going to stop them. But on my daughter's behalf, thank God she's still with us, but I don't want her through any more misery than I have to.
What's the size of your lot?
Two-point-one acres.
Two-point-one acres. We got a two-thousand-square-foot house that we built. Might have got pictures, my daughter with a screw gun putting up sheep rock.
Yeah, I've got a picture of your house.
Yes.
You're fronted on Commerce?
Yes.
That's you at the corner of Commerce and?
We're right on, I've got a?
Oakwood and Commerce is, you're in the corner?
See there, where that like a bee comes out right in the corner there?
Mm-hmm.
That's where we're at.
Okay.
Okay.
Where's a few trees in the mix.
So you're right next to them?
Yes.
Butted up.
Well, we're one lot over where they're planted. Well, we're one lot over where they're planted.
Here?
Can she come up? She's got a highlight.
Oh, you have a highlight? Show us that.
Oh, I see, yeah, okay, okay.
And they were talking about having equipment and everything else. I mean, there's gonna be? Noise, I don't care how, how you can do it, and if they take out that woods in between there, then we're gonna get all that 331 traffic noise too. Because there are one lots behind us.
Well, who owns, who owns that to the east of you there, between you and 331?
Well, I should speak in private.
Uh, I don't know. I think it's some of their proposal is behind us.
I mean, because I would imagine something's gonna go in there, and that's gonna be a bigger issue than what these guys are talking about, because it's gonna be right next to you. And being that that's on a major thoroughfare through here, I don't see how.
I don't believe it's commercial right behind.
But with what they've got right now, with all the trucks, diesel trucks and everything else, I mean, it's gonna be a constant in and out all day.
Even right on down 331 across for Commerce Circle, they have a, I don't know if it's a plant or an office building or whatever, we still hear a bunch of noise from them from that distance. Not bad, but we still hear it.
I'm afraid you're gonna have a noise problem for?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I realize that. I mean, we're not the only one in the neighborhood in concerned of it. It's just, I'm concerned for my daughter.
Sure.
You know, we, we built that house from our own sweat and blood and out of her pocket, and I want my daughter to be more, just as comfortable as she can rest of her life, wherever she's got left.
I just don't know how you're, in that location, I think it's gonna get busier and busier, and it's gonna be a problem for you. I mean, otherwise, you're gonna have to stop everything that comes in, you know, and that somebody wants to have approved over there. But I, I feel for you, I understand. I'm just, I'm just concerned about that location being right next to a major thoroughfare, which is, that's where you're, that's where all the commercials are gonna end up going at some point.
But if it was stores or anything else, it wouldn't be like the way Chelco with all the diesel trucks going in and out, and if they're planning on storing equipment, supplies, or anything there.
Yeah, primarily, from what they were telling me, it looks like it's gonna be like a lay down yard. These trucks are gonna be out on call, and then in the evenings, when they come in and finish it, if I'm correct there? At the end of the day, they come in, park the trucks, but everything else is just lay down material. Would you like to speak?
Yes, so the, the business pattern for Southland is that, that the largest exit of the trucks is in the morning. They all head out for their jobs, they're out all day, they come back in the afternoon. Now, there may be a pickup truck or two during the day that are in and out of that yard, but, but there's not an all-day delivery going on there or traffic. I mean, they, they get their jobs scheduled, and the trucks head out, and they're gone all day. And then they come back in the afternoon, and then they leave, and the place is then closed, locked up until the next morning.
At Macamway, I'm assuming there's some sort of buffering requirement between industrial and residential?
Yes, there would be at least a 20-foot buffer. And I think there, and I can't quite, could I see your drawing to see exactly where you live? So there is one lot between you and the proposed site?
Yes. If I might add though, that, that mobile home is not in our, not in?
No, I mean, there, there is a lot that buffers this particular.
What's on the tax, the razor? Tax code?
Being split, and so there will be actually two lots between our boundary and theirs.
Okay, let me ask you this too. I know y'all don't have your design and everything set up, but if your building is more to the south side of it and everything, which could act as a buffer between where your trucks and everything are coming in, putting them more on the corner, that would help their situation probably as much as anything, because then you're gonna have even more space, plus a building that, that buffers the sound.
I would anticipate that, that the building and the development would be closer to the corner of Oakwood Lakes Boulevard and 331, and that the driveways would be off 331 and off Oakwood Lakes.
So all your entry and exit's gonna come off of 331?
I'm anticipating that's what would happen, yes, sir.
I'm just trying to come up with something that'll help them.
I, I think though, there actually are two lots between their property and ours. Where you see that other mobile home, we're not acquiring, because I understand that's part of what we're acquiring.
The paper that we got, it shows, the paper that we have received through the mail?
This one here?
It's got what lots it was gonna be, and we looked them up on the plaque. And is this it right here?
Yes.
In fairness to them, their, the confusion is, Blue Northern has divided some property there, and there is a parent parcel number, but we're not buying the entire parcel. We're only getting one lot out of that parent parcel number. So that, that would be confusing.
So most of yours is gonna stay up toward 331, more to the east?
Are you gonna have a fence around it?
Oh, it'll absolutely be fenced, yes.
Okay, well, that'll help too.
And we, obviously, when we apply for the permits and development order, will have to meet all of the county standards for buffering and fencing and those things.
Could that be chain link or privacy?
I don't, I don't know that.
What was the question? I didn't hear that.
Chain link or privacy or?
Well, we could, we could recommend.
Recommend privacy.
Privacy to help them with their noise.
Because what they have across the road is just chain link, and they got loud speakers out there, they talk on and all that stuff. I don't know what kind of setup that is. I hear them out there playing music and on the, on the speakers outside of the building as well.
Well, we can make a recommendation for privacy fence and any other thing that might, that y'all could work with them on for noise abatement from, to their area over there.
That'll work.
It would be highly appreciated.
Okay.
Commissioners, correct my statement earlier, the buffer requirement is 25 feet between industrial and this other, and any other land use.
So we could have a privacy fence and vegetation in there too?
Right, and, and the Conference of Planning and Development Code allows the county to specify additional buffering mechanisms if they're deemed appropriate.
Good, okay.
That's good.
Okay, thank you.
Have a Jeff McKinnis. Okay. Commissioners, have anything else?
I don't. Well, I recommend we approve it based on the recommendations that we were talking about with the privacy fence and, of course, vegetated bufferings on that 25-foot through there. And anything else they think will help with the noise to that?
Just clarify on the privacy fencing, that just be on the boundary of the residential?
Yes.
Right, just the buffer.
Right, right.
Thank you.
And to also make measures of controlling a noise of outdoor speaker systems?
Yeah, I'm not sure what that is, but I don't know if it's called any outdoor stereo systems.
Loud music or even talking on loud?
Like a PA system?
Yeah, PA system or anything, try to keep the noise down since there are residences living around that area.
Yes, ma'am, and those are conditions that could be applied at the development order stage when they come back to actually develop the property.
Okay, well, these are good suggestions.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Measure passes.
That's all we have.
That's it.
We are stand adjourned. I don't know, just left us standing.
I asked earlier.
Thanks for all the help.